Vice Chair Posma.
Here.
Chair Greenfield.
Here.
Commissioner Hurley.
Here.
Commissioner Mesba.
Here.
And Commissioners Heberlin and Millen are excused.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes have been distributed. Are there any changes or corrections to be made?
Chair Greenfield, I think we have citizens' input on the agenda before the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we do indeed. Sorry. Head of myself. This is a time when we reserve an occasion for public to address the Planning Commission on any items which are not on the... Any items that are not scheduled for a public hearing. We have no public hearing this evening. I'm looking for my script. Found it. Therefore, if any member of the audience would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern within the commission's purview, please raise your hand so that we may hear from you now. And if you would be so kind as to fill out a public testimony card and hand it to our clerk.
It'll be all right to do it after the fact.
You can do it after the fact. That's fine.
All right. Hello. My name is Garrett Pryor. I'm here to put a face with a name. I'll be getting in contact to send a few comments already. But my family and I, we moved 3,000 miles last summer from Richmond, Virginia, here to Wilsonville to follow some friends who are moving back as well. So just delighted to spend my first year here in the community. I had an experience with education inequality as a kid, growing up in East Cleveland schools and then moving to some of the richest and highest-paid public schools in Ohio. And so that divide has really driven my career from a teacher to an urban planner to a community organizer. And so I've started to... Whenever I move to a place, I like to examine those issues in that community. And so I'm going to start writing about some of our racial divides nationally, but through the scope here of Wilsonville in our schools and in our urbanism and our housing and in our workforce. So with that, I think your Equitable Housing Task Force is an excellent name and title to that. And so really, my writing and my help with you all and with the task force and council is to really achieve and live up to that title of equity. And so in the comments I sent you all, just kind of recapping the first meeting, I think it was a great start. You have a lot of very smart people in the task force room. And when you all have your work session coming up in September, I just embolden you to ask big questions. A lot of work around equity is in name only and it very incrementally goes at the margin of things. So I just, what are big things we can do as a city in our planning? And really to see those plans into implementation. I was able to follow a little bit the tail end of the Town Center Plan, and I think that's an excellent way to kind of establish a good dense urban core of mixed use. But also, I'd push us to work, how can we make sure that's mixed income and affordable housing around where the infrastructure and jobs and other resources are in our community? Also, in looking through the packet, my nerdy urban planner side of me just itched a little bit our open space standards. And so I had a few comments for that. The private yards is always tricky a little bit. I could see how you could calculate that originally on, but in practice, if that's seen as kind of required open space, it's really hard to enforce that over time. You know, people want to put a patio or other types of things that use up that open space. This question of what can be quality open space is a difficult one. I liked in the past where we view standards around contiguous land or land that's not delegated for wetlands or just little pieces that kind of just become discarded and counted as open space, which I think we already have, it seemed like, some language towards that. So it's moving in a good path, but it is a difficult item that a lot of communities are working with. All right, the three minutes exactly, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Welcome to Wilsonville. Does anyone else wish to speak to the commission? Very well. Now, to consideration of the minutes, does anyone have any corrections or additions to be made on our July minutes? I actually have a couple of items. Very small ones. On page four of five of the minutes, in the next-to-last paragraph before the informational title, I am referred to as noting that one could not reliably count the number of residences in Charbonneau. That actually may be my words, and I have to confess that I have not actually looked or called up the video of that night. But I can say, and I wish to have on the record, that my intent was to say I could not easily count the number of residences. I think that certainly it is possible to reliably count the number of residences in Charbonneau.
You can even easily count them because the data is available.
Yeah.
I understood you were saying easily guess because if you were just walking through, you wouldn't know how many.
Thank you. That actually gets very much at my intention. On that same page in the very last, next-to-last line, and this is probably more important to me. Chair Greenfield added, "The follow-up session was very interesting and a bit too factual." I hope I didn't actually use those words since I'm never afraid of the facts. But in that case, what I was trying to express was that I found the facts alarming in regard to the gap between discovery of a break in the gas line and the time it took to close it. So I would just substitute, if possible, instead of too factual, the simple word alarming as capturing my intention. Does anyone have an objection to making that correction?
Well, I think we need a motion regardless since we're making changes to the minutes, don't we?
Not sure whether that's going to be covered by...
Yeah, you should go ahead and make a motion.
It won't hurt. It might be superfluous. Do I hear a motion to accept that change? Those two changes?
Both of them?
Well, I guess the point... Do we have any other corrections or changes? And we can just accept both of those at the same time? All of it together if so?
Yes.
Well, is that it for you, Jerry? Does anybody else have any changes? Then I'll move that we adopt the minutes with the changes as suggested by Chair Greenfield.
Thank you. For the record, that would be...
With both changes.
To substitute...
We would substitute reliably count with easily guess, and we would substitute a bit too factual with alarming.
Thank you very much.
That's my motion.
Commissioner Mesba seconded.
Is there any discussion of the motion? It's been moved and seconded. The minutes for the July meeting be amended to read on page four or five that one could not reliably estimate... No, I'm sorry. One could not easily estimate the number of residences in Charbonneau, et cetera. And on the next bottom line, a bit alarming to replace a bit too factual.
And for further clarification, it's easily guess was the motion?
Easily guess.
Correct.
Yes. Thank you. Those in favor of that change? Those changes?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll abstain.
You're abstaining?
Yes.
All right. The motion carries. The script is out of date. We no longer are receiving a City Council liaison report at this point in our meeting. Rather, we have a written report, which we'll refer to at the end of the meeting. We then move on to our first item in our work session, which is an online engagement tool. Will Ms. Bacial present our presenters?
Absolutely. So I'm really excited to present Bill Evans, Communications and Marketing Manager, and Beth Wolfe, Senior Systems Analyst with the City of Wilsonville. And I'm really excited to have this item before you today. I'm actually going to step down and join them here in a moment. But this is, as you know, particularly through the Town Center, we have continuously been trying to improve community engagement that the city is doing and make sure that we are transparent in our efforts and the work that we're doing and that we're highly engaged with the community and that we provide a lot of different opportunities for people to do that. And so one of the ways that people are engaging is online. And so tonight, we're going to talk to you about a community engagement tool that we've been talking about for about nine months and that we've been implementing over the past few months in-house with the city and are about to launch with the community. So without further ado, go ahead and take it away, Bill.
Great. I'll vamp so you can have time to get down here.
Thanks.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here to talk to you about this. My name is Bill Evans. I'm the Communications and Marketing Manager. With me, Beth Wolfe and Miranda. We are excited to deliver this information about our new community engagement tool called Let's Talk Wilsonville. And we kind of conceive this a little bit as I've been calling it a virtual city hall. Not everybody has the opportunity to come down here and spend their three minutes. But there are a lot of people that are interested in what's going on. So we're hoping that this tool helps more people get information they want on the projects they want, but not just get information, but engage. Unfortunately, so many websites, including our own city website, are very effective at delivering information, but they aren't very effective at engagement. Social media sites can be very effective at engagement, but they're also sort of not moderated, not necessarily safe spaces. So I think from my standpoint, one of the bigger benefits is this ability to put all of our current projects, archive past projects as we finish up in a sort of a consistent home that people can go to anytime, that is a safe and moderated space, not just to sort of learn about the projects, learn project timelines, have access to the project managers to reach out to contact, but also to have tools specifically designed to help people engage, which Beth is going to speak to in more detail. And also giving us an opportunity, as the last bullet point mentions, to understand who's engaged because this site will require some registration. So we'll have some basic demographic information about people that's going to let us know who's at the table, if we're getting overrepresented by certain age or race or geographic representation, then we know we've got work to do on other underrepresented sites.
So to help describe some of the benefits of this tool and this portal, we wanted to talk a little bit about Town Center and a lot of the things we learned through that process, right? It was one of the most highly engaging public input processes that we've led, at least in the recent history of the city. And there were a lot of things that we learned through that process. And a tool like this could really actually help moving forward. So I thought I'd use that project, just because all of you are very familiar with it as well, to sort of illuminate some of the benefits that we see through Let's Talk Wilsonville. It was definitely something that when I learned about it, these benefits quickly came to mind. For a project like Town Center and for many of the projects with the city, we set up individual project websites. So we had WilsonvilleTownCenter.com. We have projects like French Prairie Bridge. I don't know if it's that.com or what it is. There are lots of different project websites that take money to set up with the consultant team and to manage over the time of that project. It also means that residents have to find where those project websites are in order to engage with that project. The city's website does a good job of outlining, here are the projects each department or division's working on, but it doesn't give the space to be able to do some of these more interactive functions that we use these other project websites for. It also means that at the beginning of a project, we set forth what we think might work for engagement, and we look at what tools we're going to want to use for that engagement. And those don't always work. And as you'll recall, during the Town Center, we saw that some of the things that we put out there engaged a whole lot of people, and then some of the things we put out there didn't engage very many people. And some of those were costly. They were elements that went on our project website and are things that, while in the Town Center, because it was a large project and we had some budget that we could work with and we could be flexible and we could change tracks, many of our projects cannot do that. Many of our projects, we don't have the ability to be flexible. Some of our projects don't even have money set aside to do specific outreach. We rely on our Planning Commission and City Council meetings or open houses that we have. So this, the type of engagement as Beth's going to walk through, provides you with some nimble engagement. So for example, if we had a big survey, like we tried to do in Town Center, actually, we got a lot of good participation on the Town Center surveys, which is good, but we don't always, we could switch and we could try using a different tool. And it's a platform that's super easy for staffs to set up. I set up one of the pages within about 10 minutes when we were putting together the initial Let's Talk Wilsonville website. But the biggest components, I think, that are important about this is that it's one place for citizens to go all the time. So they may not know what projects. They may not know to seek out Town Center or French Prairie Bridge, but they want to know about what's happening in their community and where they can have a voice and how they can participate in a process and what surveys are out there at any given time. And what this does is it's that platform. They always go to Let'sTalkWilsonville.com, and they will see on the homepage what projects are taking input at that time. And so that homepage will change, and it'll check, it'll... What's kind of showing on that page will come and go as different things are participating. So if somebody comes by once a month, they'll know what projects are taking input and how they can participate. And as Beth walks you through some of the website, you'll also start to see these components on each page that we're making sure we're putting out there about timeline and milestones for projects. And they specifically relate to how engagement's being taken. So it's not just the milestones of, we'll have a draft of the plan and a final draft of the plan. The perspective for that is here is the timeline in terms of when engagement is being taken and when you can participate in it and then how that informs the next step in the project. So the timelines there as well as what staff are working on any given project. And part of this is to really help with the transparency and the visibility of when engagement's taking place and how they can engage. And after those periods are done, it's also maintained on this website so people can go back two years from now and would have been able to see how everyone engaged with the Town Center Plan, whereas the current Town Center website will be going away. So having this type of tool provides us with that type of archiving and that type of transparency even when a project has passed. All right. So we looked at various different software platforms for this, and we decided that the Engagement HQ platform was the best and fit the needs of Wilsonville. It offers all of these different tools. I know it's kind of really hard to see, but all these tools will be available to all the different departments, as Miranda said. So departments that don't have an engagement budget will be able to take advantage and use all of these tools. Anywhere from your surveys, your polls, your Q&amp;A stories, places, so dropping a pin on a map, ideas wall, so similar to if you're just putting a post-it note up on a bulletin board. So we're really excited to take advantage of all of these tools. And I'm going to jump in and show you Let'sTalkWilsonville.com. So that's the URL that people will be going to. And we'll have links from the main city's website and our library and transit and parks and websites as well.
I'll interrupt briefly just to say that the reason we passed out these cards in front of you. So when project managers are working on a project at a meeting, they can take a stack of these and give people information about the site. They can either type in the URL or access it with a QR reader so we can have people with a quick takeaway so they can get registered quickly.
And I would just like to reiterate that for the budget-conscious, this is again a way in which we become so much more efficient as a city by always having the same business card, which says, here's where you go to participate. So regardless of the project, the project manager that's out there talking to you, whether it's about a parks project or a planning project or a library project, they say, go to this website, participate. And it makes it very clear and it saves money. We spent a lot of time creating a lot of different bookmarks for Town Center, which was a project that we took over as an idea from SMART, who created their own bookmarks. So you can already see the efficiencies that we can take advantage of through this. All right. So I'm going to jump in and show you the website and kind of walk through a few different areas. So this is the site. This is the homepage. So as Bill and Miranda have already said, this is a one-stop shop for all engagement projects. And so the homepage is going to have all the current projects in these very pretty graphical tiles. So you can kind of scroll through and see which active projects are going on the site. At the very top of the page is also a nice navigation that will list out the current projects. And once, like Miranda said, there are some past projects, they'll be under this menu so that if you did engage and you filled out a survey, you could go to those past projects and you can see what the survey responses were, again, offering that nice transparency. And then we do have links back to the city's main site. There's a search. Here's where there's some sign-in and registration. We even have a language thing up here at the top so they can change it to a different language. So I'm going to jump into one of these tiles. The very first one is the About Let's Talk Wilsonville. So this is kind of the reason of, you know, why are we doing this? What does this website do for people? What you'll notice is that we're going to have a very consistent layout with all the different projects. So it's going to be very easy for citizens to navigate this site. And so when they come back, it's kind of the same look and feel. In the middle here is a big description area. Over here on the right is going to be what we call the widgets. So who's listening? So who's the staff member that's part of this project? If they have yet to register, they're going to see this Register to Have Your Say button. Once they do register, that will go away. And then any important links over here. Down here on the bottom is where the engagement tools are placed. So for this one, we decided to use the mapping tool. And so it's places we love. So what we're asking is for citizens to go ahead and drop a pin on the map of the different places that they love around Wilsonville. They can do a little description. They can add a photo. They have to register to do this. And once they register, then we have all of that information and we can then communicate with them. The really nice thing about registration, too, is once I do place a pin on the map, I will get an email as the citizen. And in that email, we'll say what I said. And then it will also have links on the bottom to go engage with the other projects that are up on this website. So it kind of keeps people coming back to the site as they engage with the site. Another thing that we put up is a Share Your Ideas. So this is the ideas wall, or like I said, the post-it note. And here's where, if you wanted to, you could come in here. You could sign in or register. And then you could go ahead and post your idea. And your ideas then can have comments. People can vote your ideas up. So that's really nice. All right. Let's go look at another one. So like I said, you could go up here to this dropdown. We'll look at the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. Again, you're going to see kind of a consistent layout. We used a photo here. We added some key dates. The really nice thing that Miranda mentioned is this kind of milestones or this timeline over here. So what's been done so far, where are we at in the process, and then what's upcoming. So if you are engaging with a project, you kind of have an idea of when to come back or what to look for. It's all listed out here for you. So on this one, they decided to do a survey. So you click the button to take a survey. And as you'll notice, it's going to remind you that you need to be registered and signed in to take that survey. But as you'll notice, there's a nice survey here. People can fill it out, and then we get that information. Another project we have up here is for the Library Summer Reading Program. It's a very popular program there. Again, you'll see consistent look and feel. We decided to use the Quick Poll here. What's nice with the Quick Poll is we can turn the registration off for this. So if we want just to have, you know, something really easy that people can participate in, the Quick Poll is something. It's a one-question thing. They answer it. And they can also view the results of what other people have said. So it's kind of a nice, easy engagement tool to use. This reminds me of the Town Center Question of the Month. All right. Another project we put up here is the Community Block Party. So for this one, we also put a survey up. But we also did one is Share Your Photo. So what we're hoping is that we can get people to come here. It's using the ideas wall, but they could come up here and say what their favorite thing was at the Community Block Party, post a photo, so keeping it very fun and kind of engaging and seeing what other people are doing at the block party. All right. And last, let's look at Share Your Walking Story. So for this one, we're using the Stories tool. So you can come and you can add your story, and your story could have a photo. So, you know, we ask people, you know, tell us your walking story or what, you know, motivates you to get out and move. And so, you know, people can come up here, tell us their stories, maybe tell us their fun places to walk. Yes, and we chose Batman to put some information up there. So the site is obviously brand-new, so we don't have a lot of information up there yet. But like I said, so far, it's very easy to navigate from one project to the other. You can always go home and you're back to these very pretty graphical tiles, and you can jump around to the different projects if you want. You also notice that there's these bars here kind of letting you know, you know, where there's, you know, input needed. This one is just a link to the registration, so there really isn't any engagement efforts on there. All right. So now I'm going to jump over and show you stuff that I really enjoy, which is the analytics of all the data that we'll be collecting. I'm going to kind of just show it to you, but it's kind of a lot to take in. So the first one is that you can have... Let me get back to the top. You can print out these PDF reports of your different projects. So this one is just on the Community Block Party. And what it's telling us is kind of, you know, how many people visited this page in the timeline that I specified, which, again, the site's very new, so we have minimal data here. The other thing that this platform does is it counts aware visitors versus informed versus engaged. So aware visitors just come and hit that page, and they don't do anything else. Informed visitors come to the site and they click around, look at some of the photos. Maybe they looked at some ideas that people posted. And then obviously, the engaged visitors actually commented and engaged on the site. So it's really nice, and then it tells us kind of what people are doing. And then in more detail, and I know it's kind of a lot, it tells you, you know, where were people doing these things? You know, what were they engaged on? So we had the ideas wall, so it gets into more detail. This report, again, we have these two tools, so it's letting us know that. This is the widget over on the side with the key dates. And then this would be the survey responses. Now, we only have one person that's filled this out, so again, not good data. But you can see how it's very visual in what was answered. So, you know, Batman, he thought Wednesday is a great day to hold the block party, you know, what hours, so answered there. So it's a really easy, nice report that we, a staff, can run at any time. So like Miranda said, if we ever need to change tools or wondering what's going on or we need to inform you of what's going on, I mean, that took me all of like one minute to go click and run a report. So that's the piece that I think is going to be really cool once we get some data in there. So I'll bring you up to this Excel file. And again, it has summary of data. So visitors, kind of the same stuff that you saw in the PDF. But then these different tabs will go into more detail. So you can see on which dates how many visitors we had. So maybe if Bill's pushing out something on Facebook that pushes people to the site, we can see, we can see, hey, you know, it really worked the day that you did that, and we know exactly what day that was. So we can look at that. Traffic sources, so where are people coming to the site from? Right now, it's direct, and it's also from the city's website. So if I scroll over, you can see where it's coming from. So we can see how people are navigating to this website. And the Block Party had a survey tool up there. So I'm going to scroll to the top. And we had one person fill out the survey. And because we made people register to fill out the survey, all of the information that they signed up for, so all that demographic information is collected. So I'm going to slide you over here to the right, and you'll see what Batman's survey responses were for each question. We saw it graphically in the PDF report. And then you can keep scrolling, and you'll see his information that he filled out when he first registered. So it's all contained within here. I can also scroll down in this Excel file and see some of that information graphically. So Wednesday was the day. If I keep scrolling, he really enjoyed the band. This is his demographic information that he filled out. So a lot of data.
And so what's really nice about this is when it's not filled out by one person, you're not looking at the details of each individual response, right? Here instead, we would just be looking at, let's say we had 100 responses, we would be able to see, okay, of those 100 people, how many of them work in Wilsonville, versus how many of them live in Wilsonville? How many of them make a certain income range? Or, you know, what's the general age of who's participating and responding to the survey? And that helps us to better understand, again, who is responding, who is engaging online. Not everyone engages online. And so we have to get out in the public, and this helps us to understand what demographics to reach out to through our engagement efforts. In real time, which is the nice part. We don't have to wait for this information to get processed by somebody else.
And as I think you've mentioned previously, it's, the reports will look consistent. So in terms of delivering data, the people that need to see it, they're going to become familiar with what that report looks like, because they'll be fairly similar each time. So next steps, always seeking and develop new content. As you could see, a lot of that, with the exception of the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, is less sort of meaty. We're going to work to, you know, as bigger projects come online, to get those and have them front and center, to really push the information that we need the most input on. And then also, you know, the sky's the limit in terms of content. If the Planning Commission, if the City Council wanted to have a, you know, Ask the Commission type segment where you would just take general public questions and find time to answer them, we could do something like that. So the sky really is the limit. In terms of beyond the content, our next steps then are marketing and getting this out to as many people as possible, so we can begin to get registrations. This is one tool, it's going to work in concert with other tools. So we can use the Boons Ferry Messenger to promote, we can use Nextdoor, Facebook, and other social sites to promote, we can use our website to promote. But we're also going to do a little face-to-face contact tomorrow night at the Block Party. The three of us will be out handing out these cards, incentivizing registration with some Street of Dreams tickets, and with an offering to one lucky person, the opportunity to win a Kindle Fire. We're going to require that people engage in some form with the site, and then draw a winner from among those who have engaged next Monday, and then we'll repeat that process in September, once the Boons Ferry Messenger is out. That is it, in terms of our prepared presentation, but we're happy to answer any questions.
How does it end up looking for mobile?
Really well.
Okay. Because we're not looking at it, I was just curious.
I know. So the little, well, the big tiles, all the tiles become, you know, tiles that go on your phone, so you just scroll down the tiles in that order. And then it has what I call the hamburger button, but it says three lines that you can click on to see the different menus. So it does look really nice on there.
So one of the, being kind of involved in the Planning Commission, one of my favorite contents of the city of Wilsonville website is this thing that says, it's probably maintained by the planning department, is things, there's projects around the city. And you kind of browse in and see all of the things, you know, you can see the state of whether things are under construction, or whether they're being planned, or whether they're being approved, and that sort of thing. Is that, is that something that might connect up with this new site? Because people might want to give feedback, or have concerns, or ask questions about projects that they see going on around the city, or, you know, when, for example, when the stables in Frog Pond got demolished, that's when the Frog Pond construction became real for a lot of people. Despite, you know, us in planning, being involved in it for years, a lot of people weren't really aware that was going to happen, and that that area was going to redevelop. And then suddenly, that stables got, you know, flattened out, and people on the social media groups kind of went a bit crazy about it, you know. So if this is, if this is a forum where people can be a bit more direct and have two-way conversations and get questions in a, in a, a lot of the way that this site is city moderated, right? So we're, so we're going to have less fake news on there, less misinformation. So maybe that sort of thing could be, could, you know, the projects around the city, maybe that actually needs to move to this new website.
Yeah, we haven't really talked about that yet. But as you can see, this is a really new platform for the city in terms of how to engage on different projects. We do see it as a platform where there always needs to be two-way engagement. So if it's primarily just information out, then we really would be still doing that through our city website and not replacing the good information that's on our website. But I think that there's, there is a really good potential here to have like a Q and A about our existing projects, or current projects that are happening around the city, to provide the community with an opportunity to ask a question, and then for the city to be able to provide an answer, and have that be an answer that is consistent, because it goes out on this platform that everyone can refer to. There's a city, so we, when we were looking at these different platforms and looking at potentially doing this, we looked at what a lot of other people are doing, obviously, and looked at a lot of examples of other cities, local governments who are using these types of tools. And one of them actually had a Mythbusters page. And so they used it for this very kind of use, which was, is, uses the Q and A tool. It's a Mythbusters, so they say, you know, give us your best question, or, or the craziest thing you're hearing out in the community. And you get to put that question up there, and then they respond and get that information back out for the public to see. So I appreciate that suggestion, that's something we can definitely talk about in the Planning Division.
Yeah, because even though it's project-oriented, if people are, if we're branding this and selling it as a way to have two-way engagement, there does need to be a space for general engagement and people to just ask general queries, that we can begin that conversation with them.
The reference was made to the activities that we had with the Town Center redesign. And this is an excellent kind of first step in what I was pushing, that the city move to that level of engagement in all of its projects. And getting structural corrections to our tools, like this is, is an excellent first step. I hesitate to call this a conversation, because even though you have a Q and A, this is not a dialogue, this is not a conversation. And what we ended up doing in the Town Center was having all these open house, and not just open house, but gathering opportunities where there was a community dialogue on issues, and examples, and problem-solving together, and those kinds of things. The conversation that goes on in social media is the default community conversation. And for the most part, is devoid of facts. So unless we find additional steps to establish ongoing conversations with the community, real conversations. And it's very difficult, I know, it's staff-intensive, I know, it's, you know, takes time and space, and people don't have time all the time, and all that. But the default is social media, and is just going to be difficult to disabuse people of the rumors that is being filled in the, in the gap. I'm hopeful that this will be a good first step, and out of the question and answers and so forth, as we apply this tool to our real projects, we expand it to have all of the fun stuff we were having, failure and all, with the Town Center project. Because I don't think anything will replace the face-to-face, and not just, you know, officials and appointed or elected officials and staff, but citizen-to-citizen kind of conversation. So I'm really hopeful, and this is a great first, first step, congratulations to the
So just two questions. First, the very simple softball one for you. The U and the P on the back of the card.
Username and password. What we wanted to do there is have a takeaway for people. If we did get them to register on-site, to quickly just sort of jot down their username and password, so they could take it home and not forget it, so they had it available the next time they logged in.
And the other, I was thinking, does it have the ability, once people are registered, obviously, where, so when a new survey opens up, you can send it out and say, hey, it's open. But then as it comes close to closing, and you can differentiate between who, who's registered, okay, so we can say, hey, we're closing in two days, we haven't heard from you yet.
Yes, so we, that is an area that we failed to mention, which is another strength, is that we currently use all these different platforms to be able to do engagement and follow-up. And because people are registered and it's attached to an email, we understand, we can even see, for example, folks who engaged in the first Equitable Housing Survey. So say they answer the survey, and we put up another one, we can strategically target everyone who's either come to the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan site, or come to, or who actually took the survey and said, we have, thank you for participating, here's another survey. And we can also see which of those have not participated, and send out them a reminder. So there's a really great tool embedded within it to help us collect our interested parties' lists, and help do a lot of that work for us.
Perfect. Does it have the ability where if somebody, whether it's, they're in the middle of it, or when a new one comes along, to be able to say, hey, I'm not really interested in that project or survey? In essence, kind of like mute that project for me, but still keep me in the greater system?
I'd have to look into that one. We can, that's a, that's a great question. I haven't asked our partners who created the software, and we can ask them that, because I think that's a really good question. Because we don't, we can see what they have engaged with. And so yes, it's like, they may have engaged with it, but now they want to be done.
It was interesting to me, but it's not at all something that affects my life, so I'm not going to.
Right, right. That's a great question.
Thanks.
It's an awesome, awesome tool.
Great, thank you.
Who has created the software?
It's a company called Bang the Table. And so the Engagement HQ is their software that they call, the platform that they have. So the city of Tigard also uses it, so we've met with their communications manager and, you know, asked them how it was working for them, and they really liked it, so.
And what server are we using?
So it's, they host it all. So it's kind of one of those software-as-a-solution kind of things, so it's up in the cloud, and we pay an annual maintenance fee to have access to it and use it, so.
Are there, excuse me, any bandwidth limitations?
Not that they've told me that I'm aware of, yeah. They said we could have as many projects as we wanted, and they help us with moderation. Yeah.
So barring a service attack, we're safe.
Yes.
Explain about the moderation, how do they help us with the moderation?
So there are, they have part of their, part of it's software-based, and then part of it's human-based. So the software screens for a list of a bunch of negative words, that typically wouldn't be allowed on a site like this, that maybe would fly on Facebook that's not moderated. But on a city website, we want to make sure that the dialogue still adheres to a certain level of decorum amongst the community. So they have basically a filter system that's set up to see if people are using profanities or other negative words. And it flags those. So then they go in and they read the comments to see if they're appropriate or not. And if they're not something that would be posted on the site, then a notification would go to that registered user to say, we're sorry, this comment does not meet, basically the, I don't think, are they called rules and guidelines? Or moderation policies of the site, that people would have clicked on and said they read when they signed up, whether they did or not, who knows? But they'll be resent that link to say, you know, as a reminder, here is, here are the moderation policies, or the policies to participate in this website. We invite you back, like, we, it's an invitation to, we would like you to participate, but please here, be reminded of the rules of participation on this website. If they continue to be a problem, you can put that user on hold for a while, for a time being, if needed. And that's something that then we would be seeing what the comments are that are coming through, and whether or not we would need to put somebody on hold, or if it's just a, you know, one-time user error, and they're invited back and they continue to participate.
By negative, you don't mean dissent?
No, I do not mean dissent. I mean...
Important clarification.
Yes.
You mean somebody who's foul-mouthed?
Inappropriate.
Inappropriate, yes. Thank you for that correction, no.
Yeah, but does it then just log the response and keep the response, but not broadcast the response? Or is it just dis-inviting that participation that they had put out there? That's, see what I'm saying? I mean, if, if they put one on there that's been flagged, will it just plain be removed from being put on the website? Or will it still log as input to whatever you're putting out there?
So as the administrators, is that what we're called? As the administrators of the website, we will see the comments that come in, and know of the comments that have not met the moderation policy, they will not go live on the website.
Okay. So they'll still be accumulated for the sake of the data?
I believe so, because I know we have to approve, when things come in, we have to approve them. So if we disapprove them, we would see them, in order to disapprove them. I don't know what happens to them on the backend, and that's something we can ask our folks at Engagement HQ.
Thinking ahead, as, you know, we can, we can certainly, to some extent, censor what is put out, broadcast to the public, right? But we can't necessarily take away a person's opportunity to provide that input, even though it's not broadcast out to the rest of the community on our regulated site, right? And that's, I guess, what worries me, is, is the free speech right, so to speak, to be able to lodge your comment, and however you want to put it, however we as a community can make sure we're not broadcasting that out to our community on our site. Does that make sense?
Well, it's, it's more than free speech, it's open records. We're soliciting input for government purposes.
And that's my point, I guess, is you want to log it and maintain it, but we would, as a community, be able to say, it's not going to be something that's visible to people who go onto the site.
Yeah, we, yeah, that does make sense. We'll double-check with the company. My understanding is it will still be logged in the system. But we haven't had a comment that we've rejected, so I can't say that with all certainty.
He's pretty wholesome.
He plays by the rules.
At least until recent iterations of the Batman, but he's been pretty wholesome, otherwise. But I guess, I hope you're seeing my point, right?
I do.
Is that people still get to log on and place their comments, and we may not like the words that they use, and we may not want to put it out there for children to go click on it and see, which we can do as a community, but we can't keep them from participating.
And still be included in the analytics.
Right, if 100 people expressed dissent, and none of those comments are appropriate, it's still, should be of public record that 100 people have expressed dissent.
Well, I guess my hope is, is that they would, and maybe that I'm being too hopeful, but that they would see the moderation and repost their comment, and just subtract the words that are inappropriate.
It's the hope, but not the requirement, I guess. That's the concern.
Yes. I know that, for example, at the end of a project, one of the other nice features of this, which you all will understand very well, since you often have to see records of a public process that are hundreds to thousands of pages in length, is that this also, it does accumulate all the records, including all the comments that are provided over the course of all the public input tools that are used on a project. And you can recreate, create a record at the end, that gives you a report of all the results, all in one place, all in one document, which would make a lot of our preparation for our records very, much faster and easier for our staff. So my understanding is, because that, we've seen those, and they collect every comment. But we'll just double-check and make sure that the ones that are inappropriate are also still logged with the city as a record.
Are the analytics going to be accessible to the general public, or only to administrators?
Right now, those ones I showed you are only available to administrators. And I think... think if we put anything out to the general public, it would be through probably one of these forums that you would draft up a report using that information, but... Right, so typically, the way the analytics would work, I mean, there's the website analytics portion, which I think is mostly for us to understand how people are engaging, and we might report on that regularly to the planning commissioner, city council. But, for example, like, when a survey's done, so say we have the Equable Housing Survey that's out there, and when that one is complete, we would pull together a report to show what the results were, to share that with all of you, city council, when we go back to meetings, and that would become a part of the record for the Equable Housing Strategic Plan project. And the intent, in using a tool like this, where you are showing those timelines and you're showing where the engagement took place, is that you could provide that report as a link right there within that timeline, so that members of the public who took the survey would be able to click on that and see the report, and see the input of the community on that survey.
As that input is being collected?
Typically, we would do the report at the end of it being collected.
So, in real time, it's not available?
In real time, it's available to staff.
Yes.
So if we wanted to, for some reason, put out a mid result, the midterm results, we could do that, and solicit more input, but I'm not sure how often that would really be necessary.
So you can do town hall clicker, kind of an ongoing, ongoing vote tally in real time?
On the quick poll, you do.
The quick poll is the exception, yeah.
Yeah, just one more thing, so, two common concerns with projects that are hosted on the cloud externally to the city, and I'm sure you've thought about this, obviously, but people are going to be concerned that their demographic and personal information is secure, and that, for that, we're dependent on this third-party company. We're all giving email addresses and other information, so we need to, the city is going to need to assure participants that there is, in fact, security associated with that. And the second thing is, I think, for the city's own benefit, and I think Miranda's explanation is probably going to mitigate this quite a lot, but you're going to need to archive off this data, because if this third-party goes away at any particular time, because let's say they file for Chapter 11 or something, then that data is at risk, because it's not under the city's direct control. So you'll need to archive stuff on a regular basis to make sure it's secure.
Secondly, on that similar vein, just, sorry, just because it kind of tapped into his first point, which is, as I, would I take it that certain sensitive type of demographic information is voluntary basis, not required, as in you can't complete the registration if you don't provide, you know, race or ethnicity, or those sorts of things? Will that still allow you to have like an unreported category or something like that?
We did require all the registration questions, but on a few of those, we put an option, prefer not to answer.
Okay, great, thank you.
It's a neat logo.
I will pass that on to the designer. We paid homage to the Town Center Outreach, which was Amanda's suggestion to use those, the little figures.
It competes with Wilsonville's...
Hard-fought, hard-fought logo.
I wouldn't want to, actually, I wouldn't want to put it side-by-side in a vote, but we're going to be using both, obviously, and we have some other sub logos for the city that are in use anyway, but this will be appearing on all of the pages of the website, I would assume. I do think that it would be important to have crossover readily available between the two websites, so that you can always get to the other one from whichever one you're on. Is that in the works?
Yes, so I've already added up in the header of the main city website, kind of where we have the Facebook and YouTube icons, there's an icon that looks just like the logo that's up there. It's going to take some time before people are used to that brand and all of that, but in the dropdown menus, there's one for residents, we're going to put some links in there. When we launch it, we're going to do a homepage banner slider, other menus, I'll put it in there. Your suggestion probably was a great one, and maybe on those project pages, we have a link to this website. So where we can, we're definitely going to cross-link between all of the websites we have now.
And if somebody puts Wilsonville, Oregon into their Google bar, what is the splash page going to be?
So probably for that one, you're going to get the city's main website. If you throw in the Let's Talk, you're probably going to get a little bit more, better search results to get you to this website. So if you type in Let's Talk Wilsonville, the first things that come up are actually the About page that I took you to, that project page.
The city's website is going to be the default?
If you're going to do Wilsonville, Oregon, yeah.
Is this not a button on the, on the website?
It is. It's a button at the very top, right-hand corner. Yeah, I could, I could show you. And then on this one, you see the city website is on, in that header. Again, see up here in this corner, it's going to take a while for people to understand what the icon means, but probably first thing tomorrow morning, I'm going to put a banner here, and these menus will have links to it in there as well, possibly down here in the spotlight area, as much as we can, really get it in their faces and get them used to that logo, and understanding what that is, so. And then this is actually on all of the different websites, so we have the ridesmart.com, the wilsonvilleparksandrec.com, and wilsonvalley.org, those different websites also have that in their header as well, and we'll have through the menus, so, wherever we can.
Well, I, I think it is, it's neat. I very much, I'm very enthusiastic about the possibilities, its usefulness to the city and to us, and to each of our projects in the city. I think that the scope of it is excellent. I think that the design in terms of navigation is really excellent. The graphics are excellent, layout is excellent. My, I do have an area in which I have a particular expertise, and that is in legibility, as well as website usability. I've presented and published on both areas, but, and the usability, I think, is excellent here. I have no criticism that I could offer. However, I do have a criticism to offer on the legibility side of it. This is a topic on which I've been rather impassioned for a long time, and it's, frankly, don't use colored text, especially don't use desaturated colored text against a white background. And there's a lot of it here, and I think that users are going to have a hard time, especially ones that don't have good eyesight to begin with, reading some of the text here, running text particularly. It's not so bad with headers, headline text, but with running text, it is a big problem. And on at least a couple of the panels, I noted that there's actually gradation to desaturation within a paragraph or a block of text. By the time you get to the bottom, it's illegible. That's not going to work. I think that in every case, even in the case of the logo, the logo needs to be dark. It's got to have contrast, and that's brightness contrast more important than chromatic contrast. So I would urge the web designer, and I assume it's none of you, you're, we're using templates that are furnished to you, is that right?
To some degree. So this green color is something that we've set. I was able to set like the hyperlink color, which I don't think I see. So this green right here, this teal color, was something that I set playing off of the logo colors. So it's something definitely we can darken up or change.
Yeah, in general, more saturation, and particularly moving it to a darker color against a light background is very important. If you look down that page, the heading, headline... Well, here, can you move to the top of the page? What is it we've got? Oh, Listening?
Who's listening?
Hard for me to read that.
Okay.
I read all right, the white against the dark teal, darker teal. The more brightness, luminous, contrast the best, better, but that's sufficient for two reasons. First place, there is good luminance contrast between the background and register to have your say, and the letters. Below that, Who's Listening has become less legible, and below that, what is it? Recreation Coordinator and City of Wilsonville, I have to really struggle to read that. My eyesight isn't great, maybe when I was younger, it would be easier to pick that up, but a lot of our viewers are not going to be able to pick that up. So I urge going through each of these pages and really deciding whether the text is easily legible. I almost slipped into my, the error of readability. Readability is not legibility, readability is difficulty. Legibility is the ability to make, to discriminate the text, to discriminate what you're actually seeing, and it needs to be very clear if you want it to be effective.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
But I applaud, altogether, I applaud the effort. I do hope that that one, what I do regard as an important flaw, it's not a flaw of content, it's not a flaw of design, except in regard to its, the treatment of the color text.
One additional comment on the operation of this, especially the moderation of the answers and so forth. We were talking about conversations and dialogue. True conversation and dialogue requires authenticity. Oftentimes, these tools become tools of propaganda, because they become a newsletter for only positive news and positive spin. If a tool for conversation becomes known or felt that it is just positive spin, it won't be effective for a dialogue. So just keep an eye on that as you put this on, get this on the road and start getting conversations going back and forth, and the moderator starts having to deal with real problems and real answers and real tough questions. The more authentic the responses are, the more creds this will get as a tool for honest conversation, as opposed to just another cool-looking newsletter that the city puts out about how great it is. As a planning commissioner, I'm more interested in problem-solving than showing how great I am as a city citizen or whatever, you know. This is, this is, this should be where the rubber meets the road.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we need to take a break?
Yeah, break. Yeah, let's do a break.
Dan's saying, Dan's, and he's got next, so...
Is that okay with you, Dan?
That'd be wonderful.
Then I suggest we take a short break. Keep it rather short, try to be back by 7:10.
Wasn't too subtle about that?
We're in recess for five minutes. We're in recess for five minutes.
Mr. Pauli. So as you'll recall, the Residential Code Revision Project is something we brought to you back in the spring. It's a very hefty item where we're working through a number of inconsistencies in our existing code or where the code sort of conflicts with one another in different parts of it. And we've broken it into two sections. I believe it was last month or two months ago, we dealt with the densities, the density inconsistencies. And this month, we're going to work through some of the open space standards. And so Dan has a number of items to put in front of you tonight and some examples. And hopefully, we can work through this item.
Thanks, Miranda.
Thank you. Will you be addressing the emailed spreadsheets that you provided for us?
Right here on the flash track.
Excellent. Does that need to be read into the record?
Which one?
Sorry, what?
The spreadsheet that was submitted by Mr. Pauli by email of the examples.
No, this is a work session item. So that's just something that I think he wanted you to be able to see before we got here because it's a lot of information, but he's going to walk through it tonight. So it'll end up probably as an attachment anyway to the presentation.
Thanks. So here we are again, continuing on with this. We're making progress, and that's good to hear. I hope after our discussion tonight, get some clear feedback from the commission to allow us to continue to move forward. And after this, just kind of big picture, I anticipate actually probably one more topic-based work session before we do some additional outreach and then come back for kind of a summary work session and then adoption of the preferred, of the recommended changes. So open space. We talked quite a bit last time about this notion of land-consuming requirements and that they need to balance with each other. And open space is certainly one of those land-consuming requirements that really needs to be understood in how it relates to other requirements. And because there's only so much land to balance everything. So similar to last time, we'll review the basic project concepts and background and then go through the different kind of subtopics and draft recommendations. So more specific on the story here, as outlined in the staff report, is I'll start the story really in the big code rewrite that was done in '99 and 2000, which impacted the planned development residential zone and the open space requirements. Then during that period, it was interpreted, it doesn't really directly say in the code, but staff interpreted, and it was applied to subdivisions to allow rear yards to count as open space, is one major thing during that. And there's, as we'll see in the examples, there's some of our developments that were built under that. That was, the questions kept coming up about that. And so then in 2005, there was revisions made, among which was to completely remove the ability of private yards to count towards any open space requirements, meaning all open space requirement had to either be public or in shared tracks. Then, as you all are well aware, there was quite a bit of discussion in that, as we worked on Frog Pond and adopted the residential neighborhood zone that supplied in Frog Pond. There are a number of topics discussed there, and the idea of taking kind of lessons learned from Vilbo and applying the planned development residential zone through the years and coming up with, really trying to come up with the best possible residential zone to apply to the Frog Pond area. And now, we have the opportunity really to take lessons learned and kind of take that conversation we had around Frog Pond and apply that to other zones, residential zones in the city. So similar to what we talked about last time, about that concept of how we, looking at districts and how we calculate density, is similarly, we're looking at calculating open space in a manner very similar to what was determined for the residential neighborhood zones. Always, particularly with state statutes and rules around this, we need to make sure standards are clear and objective. So always looking through that lens to make sure that as we write these, where there are opportunities to improve our standards in that regard. Where it matters most, this is really important to keep in mind as we do this, that really there's not a huge applicability of this. I mean, it does really matter in the areas where it is applicable. But again, the main areas, similar to the density ranges, are the larger lots where it can be redeveloped along Canyon Creek Road South, the area just north of town center that's owned, planned development residential, that hasn't been developed, as well as that agricultural field on the south side of Wilsonville Road at Monobello. So again, I don't anticipate this to really have an impact on the other existing neighborhoods throughout town. As well, I mean, and as I mentioned last time, if there's any of the future urban reserves or UGB boundary expansions, such as down on the south side of Wilsonville Road, west of town, I mean, PDR zones may be applied there, we don't know. So that could potentially, these standards could potentially apply there as well. So the first topic to really talk about, and after the topics I will bring up, kind of to summarize, bring up those examples that I emailed out, and I think that'll provide some clarification as well. So the first one is the question of what to count as open space, particularly two areas that looking at is allowing, is to what extent to allow existing parks to count as open space. That's really a performance sort of approach to say, if a neighborhood already has great park access, are we really going to require more parks? And the other one is really trying to balance how much private yard to count towards open space. Again, there was a robust conversation around that with Frog Pond. And so building upon that conversation and the balance determined there as policy and implementing that elsewhere in the city. This really is an important component. Besides setting clear and objective standards, it also really clarifies and makes consistent throughout the city what can be applied as open space. So two recommendations is removing the waiver requirement to count nearby public parks as part of a required open space. Waivers are by their nature subjective. And so creating some clear performance standards of when you can count that and if you can, it's clear that you count it. And then, as mentioned, the amount of private yards being consistent with Frog Pond, which to review Frog Pond does not require any open space within the development areas where lots are 6,000 square feet or larger. In other words, they exempt those areas. Then where there's the smaller lots, 10% of the area is required to be open space. So that's stated another way, that 10% of those yards can be counted as open space. So really, what you end is that net area of the, that really would otherwise be dedicated for lots, whether it's 6,000, 8,000, or 4,000 square foot lots, all of that, 10% of that area is counted towards the overall open space requirement. So I know some of this gets a little, I want to make sure I'm stating it clearly, so I'll pause for any questions. If you're looking for any clarification, I'm happy to talk through it.
So yeah, I mean, what's written on that slide doesn't seem to jive with what you said and what I've read in the report either. So for example, page two of four, the section of the staff report at the bottom of that page where it says backyards. Fourth line from the bottom says, "But require 10% open space for small lots, 4,000 or 6,000 square feet, half of which must be usable." Staff recommends applying a similar approach. So, okay, so you spoke just now, I think you said 10% of private yards for all lots less than 6,000 square feet. Exactly.
Yeah, so let me, I kind of mixed two concepts, I think, as I made my statement. And so let me pull those apart a little bit. So one of the concepts, the first concept I really spoke about is that for lots that are 6,000 square feet or larger, you get to count 10%, which would be like 600 square feet for a 6,000 square foot lot, towards the overall open space requirement. And those areas of a subdivision that have lots of that size don't otherwise require private or a separate open space. But then where you have lots smaller, then you need to provide 10% of that block, let's say, would need to be open space. What that means then, the second concept then, is overall, when you're looking at the, calculating the 25% open space, there's kind of an equalizer there, that whether it's big lots or small lots, that of that residential area, or essentially the area within the streets that could otherwise be developed as lots, 10% of that area is always going to count towards that 25% total open space. Some examples might help here.
Yeah, I think some examples might help.
Okay, we'll get to those, so.
Before you go to other examples, 10% looks arbitrary to me, especially when you talk about usable open space. And usable isn't defined, usable for what?
Yeah, well, we'll get more into defining usable. Yeah, we do delve more into that here and how we can do that.
But in, you know, a short description, can you tell me, is that usable for, you know, kind of kids playing? Is this park kind of open space that you're?
So usable would be programmed open space by a professional with an eye on maximizing the ages and other demographics served by that space.
I saw that. And this is an issue that keeps coming up for me because we try to talk about open space and we don't have natural resource planning in Wilsonville or a natural resources plan. Open space, yes, it has a function that has to do with, you know, play space, pathways, this, that, and the other way thing. But an important function of open space, especially when it comes to connectivity, has to do with habitat connectivity so that wildlife can get to the river corridor, which is usually the pathway for wildlife from places in the city instead of walking down the sidewalk and getting run over. Now, that is a function of open space, not parks necessarily, but open space. And to say 10%, if it's not linear, it's not going to do anything for that continuity and continuity of stepping stone habitat kind of connections. That's why I brought it up.
Sure.
Now, you don't need to answer it because I answered it myself by saying, "This is not a natural resources plan, it's just an open space plan that you're trying to create clear categories for."
And we do have, I mean, we do have the Significant Resource Overlay Zone and the Natural Resource Plan in areas designated for wildlife corridors throughout the city. And so a couple aspects in response to your questions. First of all, the area preserved as significant resource does count towards the overall open space requirement. And really, it's that, even that space outside of the SROZ, half of that can be, be it in storm facilities or other wildlife habitat can be developed as non-park space that can serve habitat functions. So it is, we did look at this with an eye that not all the space is green parks with picnic tables, that there is an aspect of it, the SROZ plus additional that serve a wildlife. I mean, certainly some of those spaces, as they are separated from the SROZ, will be more useful to things that can fly than things that have to walk down the sidewalk. But there is an eye to that. And I think it's significant that we have our SROZ that does provide those, kind of a network of wildlife corridors and spaces for wildlife.
The SROZ that I've seen is a very disjunctured network. If you're looking at a continuity of habitat, linearity of habitat, and you have these isolation pockets, which is where difficulties arise for migratory issues with animals and those kinds of things. True, if you can fly, you do better, but not everything can fly. So that's what I was kind of trying to get some attention to, the qualitative aspects of the open space that deals particularly with habitat continuity and continuity. And I'm willing to give it up because this is not the place for it.
Yeah.
But if you're trying to include it, then this discussion of what is a useful open space will get a little deeper. I'm just raising it as an alarm.
Thank you. So go back to then what can be counted as open space. So in the code today, you have preserved natural areas, including wetlands and upland forests that are part of the SROZ. You have neighborhood, public neighborhood parks. You have other private parks and open space typically owned by a homeowners' association. You have the larger non-fenced stormwater facilities. We're not going to count every 10 square foot rain garden, but the larger ones would count, do count, as well as walking paths that beyond the walking paths that are along the sidewalk and required for connectivity. Then the proposed additions to that list then would be to allow the portions of existing public parks within the quarter mile and 10% of lots, 6,000 square feet or larger. And then all of those existing and proposed together would be 25% of the net area, which is, the existing requirement is 25% of net, and that's not proposed to change. So the next component of the calculation is then calculating the usable open space. So currently, there's a tiered approach. This gets at, trying to get at that notion of having a kind of a critical mass of a park area. So 50 lots or less require a quarter of an acre. 51 to 100 lots require half an acre, and then beyond that is a pro-rata amount. What we've seen is this becomes difficult to meet for smaller subdivisions, particular, you know, subdivisions in that 4 to 10 to 20 lot, which we increasingly, as Wilsonville, we get those smaller leftover spaces within the city, such as along Canyon Creek Road South. These become difficult to meet when trying to, and often conflict with other land-consuming requirements, particularly when you have a large portion of these lots that may be in the SROZ. And so you're trying to create, beyond the SROZ, you know, the quarter acre of open space in a small subdivision. So trying to really understand, particularly for this land that is still developable under these standards, what makes sense. And again, there was this conversation in the Frog Pond context that seems really valid for this context as well. So then the recommendation would be to remove, to move to a percentage approach similar to the to the residential neighborhood zone, but still require that half of any open space outside the SROZ must meet that definition of usable. And also, it's a smaller amount, but still keep that minimum size for each open space so we can, which is a critical component of usability, you really need a critical size. But really focusing on the quality of that space over the quantity of the space, and trying to avoid remnant tracks and other things that really become a liability for development rather than an amenity. So then, as I alluded to before, ensuring that usability of open space, where, as I mentioned, odd-shaped or different, underutilized open spaces can really become a liability without really providing any amenity or minimal amenity. And it's really important that then, if we're providing this open space, I mean, the land within the city and within the urban growth boundaries is a scarce thing, and we need to be smart on how we're using it. And so if we're able to make sure that, as we do what we can in our standards to ensure that it's efficiently used, but also that we're preserving the high-quality habitat, and that the park space that is provided is highly usable and functional, then it really, this becomes key to furthering the purpose of why we have open space requirements. So then the draft recommendations there are to establish that minimum area, and then require that these usable areas be designed by a credentialed and experienced landscape architect with focus on maximizing the use for a variety of users. With that, happy to answer questions, and I can jump in and step you through some examples of how these different regulations would apply to existing neighborhoods.
I understand what a credentialed landscaped architect is, but what are we saying experienced is?
We might take that out, if we can't really define it.
Thank you.
Because I think it may make sense to go ahead and take it out, because typically in any profession, being credentialed also means you have kind of a minimum amount of experience in order to be able to even take the exam, so.
That could.
Could save a word or two in our code, so.
Dan, why didn't you include more specific design parameters for the landscape architect to consider?
I mean, you need flexibility, first of all, and we don't know, I mean, it would be pretty extensive to write something that can't imagine every context.
No, I'm not talking about that. The preserving of valuable habitats is a standard language that creates an aquarium kind of a habitat in isolation. Preserving the functions of a high-quality habitat and explaining some of those functions creates now a habitat that preserves this connectivity, which is what I was raising.
Yeah.
Just an example.
So, and I'm trying to think, particularly in the context of these areas, and even future urban growth areas where these standards may apply, is where is the high-quality habitat that's not already part of the SROZ? And so I think the primary functions you're looking for are within the SROZ regulations that require that continuation of the riparian areas, so the riparian networks from river to headwaters, in the case of Beckman Creek, are preserved under those regulations. And there are places where there's significant upland habitat that, over the years, through agriculture or other development, have been cut off. And we don't necessarily have a plan to connect those back up, but where we can, I mean, so it's important to preserve those where they are disconnected, but also keep those forested riparian networks the way they are and improve them. And our standards do, and Kerry Rappel does work regularly with applicants, where possible, to enhance, even, you know, over adding more landscape to enhance or remove invasive species or otherwise manage those existing habitat areas.
So the areas where connectivity has been lost, are your staff encouraging re-establishing the connectivity, for example?
In some cases, it's probably hard to identify where that connectivity would naturally go.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't need to be identified. I mean, that's, the landscape architect ought to be able to tell you, based on soils and so forth, where the original drainage was. And that doesn't need to be necessarily where it goes. If it's sustainable, it can be moved. But creating that connectivity improves the water quality of that disconnected, agriculturally disconnected riparian area, or historically riparian area. What I'm saying is, that is not an SROZ, because it's no longer, it was changed through agricultural practices. But through urban development and really nicely done open space planning and environmental planning, you can resuscitate that and get benefits, not only based on habitat, but water quality. And if your design standards aren't encouraging it, at least, why would a developer do that?
You know, we could add language to say where there is a connection possibility, similar to what we do with streets, to do it. I think in this case, like, when you're master planning like a Frog Pond or a town center, you do provide those networks. I mean, there's like the pathway networks and greenway networks in Frog Pond, to provide that connectivity, or the green necklace through Town Center, where in a lot of these cases, you're dealing with a fairly small site. So your ability to re-establish a network is limited. And certainly, there may be some clear and concise language that we can explore to put in there to look, to encourage these designers to look for those opportunities, to expand or enhance. For example, if you are at the edge of an upland forest habitat, and you are required to have additional natural area or additional open space, you know, encouraging that portion that's not usable to be a continuation, you know, putting, planning that grove of trees on the side of the project next to the SROZ, rather than on the other side of the project, that sort of idea is something that could easily be integrated.
Yes. And, you know, for example, we used to, in Madison, I keep bringing it up, and I hate to do that, because, you know, the climates are not even the same. But we had a policy that discouraged where open drainage can be re-established to put anything in a pipe, because it was unnecessary kind of infrastructure cost for the city and maintenance cost for the city there, and it was preventing a, an opportunity for re-establishing open drainage to be done as part of the landscaping. Now, the extensions can be extensions of pathways, you know, the Philbert Farm south of Wilsonville has a park on the, you know, south side of it. Open space there presumably should connect to that park, so, and extend it up towards Wilsonville. I mean, that would be one usable linearity that could be expanded. Those are the kinds of things that, you know, I was hoping to see a little bit more, whether it's encouraging or what, I don't care, but some kind of statements that gets designers to know that the city is interested in it, otherwise, a designer is a designer. You give him the parameters of the design or her, and they'll come up with a design for you. And if you don't give them anything, they'll just come up with whatever is easiest.
Okay, thank you.
How is pavement treated in terms of open space?
Pavement can be pavement, like hard surfaces, like concrete, asphalt.
Non-permeable.
Non-permeable. It can be part. I mean, a pathway that's not connected to the sidewalk, like a recreational or connecting pathway, can be counted. A plaza, you know, a basketball court, plazas.
Marazzi Plaza.
Marazzi Plaza, any of that would be counted. So hard surfaces can certainly be counted as open space. So it doesn't necessarily have to be green to be counted as open space.
Well, I think that the question of permeability is an important one. We don't want to pave over all of our land.
Certainly, and I think the newer stormwater standards get to that you really pay for it, and there's, I think the consequences are more real now when you do add the impervious. So developers tend to think twice about it, or trying to minimize it, because they realize if they're going to add impervious surfaces here, it's going to take up land somewhere else to treat the runoff. Ready for the examples or other questions right now? Or other, you want to make any additional comments before I jump into the examples?
This may come up in the examples, but I'm kind of reluctant to even broach the subject, but.
They're best.
The 10% for 60,000 square feet, I'd like, six, thank you, 6,000 square feet. And I'd like to understand, again, the argument of how we got there, if any of my commissioners or staff can recall, because it's not, it's not really covered in here. And, you know, it gives me concerns about equity, where we have, you know, smaller, smaller, more dense development, having to allocate some of that land for open space, and yet larger development has kind of a buy, kind of a reduction, and so why is that, why have we come to that agreement? I think there's multiple ways of looking at this, but I, I'm a little bit concerned from an equity perspective, why, how we got there in Frog Pond, and now we're talking about applying it citywide. Go ahead.
I mean, I think other commissioners, you might have more input, if you recall the dialogue when we went through the residential neighborhood zone for Frog Pond. But a lot of the discussion there was we moved away from the percentage for all lots, and that had to do with the neighborhood parks that were in place, as well as the Beckman Creek corridor. But there was a discussion that the smaller lots, because they didn't have yard space, there was a concern that there wouldn't be enough adequate green space or open space in those areas, and there was a desire to ensure that residents of those homes would have enough space to be able to go and have open space and have other places to enjoy. And that was also part of the requirement. Why, was it, half of it has to be usable? Because we wanted to make sure that the spaces that they were going to were not kind of these tracks that were just on the side and had, you know, blanket open lawn, but that had other amenities and provided an opportunity to be usable. So my recollection of the discussion was just to ensure that there was an adequate amount of open space, and a concern that there wouldn't be enough in the areas where the lots were And that's where the commission landed.
In a sense, giving credit for large lots, thinking of the open spaces as the starting point, against which you can give credits for this or that, giving credits toward the open space requirements to the large lots penalizes the small lot owners. They have proportionally less open space allocated to them, because the large lots are getting credit, the large lot owners are getting credit for that open space. See where I'm going with this?
Mm-hmm.
There, it is a question of equity.
I think part of that was why we did limit it to just a 10%, because before, in like the 2000 code, I mean, you could, you know, you could count, you know, 50% of a lot, potentially. So, I mean, for each 6,000-square-foot lot, that's 3,000 square feet of open space that goes from the collective bucket.
Which is enjoyable by the people who own those lots, but how about the people who live in the small lots?
Right, so that's where, trying to balance the two from a practicality standpoint, and the fact that neighbors, hopefully they make friends, and they're, the people are entertaining at their rear yards, right? And so having some aspect of that rear yard, and recognizing that that does, in reality, in those neighborhoods, function for outdoor recreation purposes. But to balance that, and that 10%, appears to be agreed upon as a reasonable balance.
I guess, I guess I'm a little bit confused on the equity argument, though, because my recollection is, our concern was, as the lots got smaller, that there be usable space. And with the larger lots, yard would be usable, i.e. get kids outdoors and people outside to do things. And so I guess from an equity standpoint, I'd always looked at it as, okay, as we're shrinking the lots, we want to make sure there's usable space, and thus it means larger parks within those smaller lot subdivisions. So I guess I saw that as the offset on the equity there, is to make sure that those smaller lot portions did have usable space, where they otherwise wouldn't have it, and the larger lots could.
So they don't have to depend on having friends with large lots.
So in reality, it is very equitable.
Well, there is, there is a couple of aspects to this. I mean, certainly, if you classify the large lots as having presumably more yard space, that doesn't appear to be the case in the buildings that I've seen in Frog Pond so far, by the way. The houses just get bigger. They don't necessarily have much more outside play space. But my concern is kind of the opposite way around. It, we, when builders are planning smaller lots, they have to set aside a certain amount of space for open space. When they're planning larger lots, they don't. So what does that do to the relative costs of those land, of that land? It appears that it makes the smaller lots relatively more expensive than the larger lots per acre, because there's a tax of required open space on the smaller lots that doesn't apply to the larger lots. So the land cost for building that house.
You're 100% correct, but if you've got an issue with it, take it up with Metro.
No, no, this is, this is not Metro, this is our code.
I get it, but this is what Metro's driving, is smaller, denser, more expensive lots. And for people to not have backyards, but based on our development code, you can't completely put a house on a 7,000-square-foot lot, you got to have open space in it, i.e. a backyard.
I totally agree with the open space and the need to have open space, but what I'm saying is that we're pushing more of the onus of the cost of the land to provide that open space for the smaller lots, and away from the larger lots.
100% correct, but that's what we have here in the metro area. But the way to fix that, then, is to actually lower the requirement for open space, so that you could drive down the cost of the smaller lots. So there's no fix, because as Dan started out when he spoke, land is a zero-sum game, we only have so much of it. So I don't know how you would propose to fix that. So I don't know how you would propose to fix that. I mean, our point is, is that having a system whereby we make sure there's usable space in those smaller lot subdivisions was kind of the trade off for the fact that land is zero sum. And to make sure that those equitably, those who are buying smaller lot subdivisions still have usable space, even though they cannot pay more money for the larger lots that would have yards that factor into the usable space. And I will say that, I mean, what we need to remember too, that the stuff that's getting built over in Frog Pond right now, the stuff that we're seeing right now is the Street of Dreams homes, and it's a little bit different, but a couple of those yards were pretty large. So, you know, in theory, it is kind of serving that purpose, which we're trying to do, which is to have usable outdoor space.
So what I'm hearing, and I wasn't a part of the Frog Pond discussion. What I'm hearing is that open space is treated as a commodity. That if you can afford to have it in your backyard with a large yard because you can afford a bigger house or a bigger lot, then you have it that way. And if you don't, then you have to pay for it so that you can have a collective open space that all of your kids, for those of you who are in smaller yards, will have a space to go play. So that is, if you got it, you got it. If you don't, you have to put your resources together so that you have it, as opposed to what I'm hearing the equity argument as being, is we're building a neighborhood which is mixed use. It has higher density, lower density and so forth. And if you are able to afford a large yard, then your contribution to the neighborhood as a whole is to also donate to open space for those who don't have a big yard like you do, to have a similar amenity. That's the equity I'm hearing. And both of those make sense, depending on what philosophy you, you are following. If you're following those who have it, have it, and those who don't, well, tough luck, then that's fine. You say, you know, you need a space for your children to play. And if you have only a 10-foot yard in your backyard, then we have to have a park for them. But those who have, you know, a good 5,000 square feet of backyard, then they don't need a park. But is that what we want in the neighborhood? And we have been talking about let's have these neighborhoods be balanced and provide a range of amenities and range of possibilities and housing options, this, that and the other thing. There's more of a sharing seems to be that we need to be encouraging as opposed to saying, that's what Metro wants. Well, we have some, maybe some way of, you know, helping to create a better community for Wilson.
So for clarification, by helping, what do you mean?
Helping kids have a space to play.
But no, what do you mean by helping that happen?
Well, if, if I have a large yard and I can afford that large yard, to contribute something towards the park should be part of my neighborhood duty.
You're doing that in an SDC presumably, aren't you?
Well.
Yeah, that's already happening through the cost of the development.
If we are doing that, then the 10% becomes, the equity is taken care of with fees and lieu off as opposed to the acreage set aside. So that's what I'm saying, you know, let's, let's divide these two things in clear piles, the approach that we are taking. If you're covering it in another way through fees and lieu off, then it's covered. It's not an issue of equity anymore because we took care of it.
I think we need to back up because nothing in here has to do with who pays for what. This is only about percentages. If the builder wants to come in and say that I will not add the cost of my 10% open space down here for my 3,000 square foot lots, I will not put that cost on my 3,000 square foot lot homes. I will divide that up over my 6,000 and above square foot lots. The developer has the right to do that. We should not be the ones putting that into the code. This is just about space, not funding.
What is the practice of developers in this area?
I can't speak to that. I'm not a developer. But, and, but my point would be it doesn't matter because you could have a developer that is a nonprofit that wants to flip the model of, of the way they finance their development on its head. And, but then you might have somebody that wants to absolutely, you know, split it 100% evenly or unevenly. Depends. You, you could have 18 different versions of the funding for it. But that's not for us to determine the funding mechanism for private property.
Correct. I want to make sure that we are not structurally creating a situation where unknowingly we are doing something that is creating that kind of disparity.
I concur.
I might add that also this, this 10%, I mean, that's, that's important to note that that's 10% of overall 25%. So there's still 15% of the open space that's going to be shared regardless. We're just talking about that additional 10% kind of within the residential development. I think some of the examples will illustrate that as well. So if it's all right, we'll go ahead and jump into the examples and then we can continue discussing. So I'll start with Arbor Crossing. Ron was one of the, so Arbor Crossing. This was, this is 103 lots. And kind of show you what I've done. I've shown, you know, non, let me step back here. So Arbor Crossing is an example of a subdivision. It's fairly large. It has some SROZ, but not like 50% or, you know, a huge percentage of the development is SROZ. And it has a different size of lots, some variety in lot size. So I think it's a fairly good example. And things I, I compared are the open space that's out, that's.
Dan, Dan, sorry. Was this approved before 2005 or after?
This was approved in both Arbor Crossing and Renaissance. Part of the reason I chose them as examples is they were approved in that period between 2000, 2005. So we can really compare that 2000, 2005 scenario, the 2005 to the current code scenario and the proposed code scenario. So we can have the three things to compare. So that's the case for Arbor Crossing and Renaissance. Renaissance will be an example where there's no SROZ. So you can really see how the no SROZ scenario works out. And then Aspen Meadows is a 14 lot subdivision that was approved in 2015. Canyon Creek Road South, where about half of the site is SROZ. So kind of see how so much on a smaller project that's taken a lot of its SROZ, how that changes things. So for Arbor Crossing, you, I looked at non-SROZ open space tracks. So those open space tracks outside the SROZ, how much is in SROZ, how much is in rear yards, the total open space. And then had, on all of these, I have the non-yard open space and the usable open space. So I think it's most useful on all of these to kind of work, I'll primarily share these last two columns. In all cases, actually in the 2002 approval, because of the use of rear yards, you have about three acres counted of rear yards counted as open space. So you actually end up about 35% open space, but only about 18% of that is, of, of it is not yard. Compared to, under the current code, you'd be looking at 25% non-yard open space, which is about 1.2 acres additional. So if Arbor Crossing was proposed a couple of years later, it would have required about 1.2 acres additional in open space tracks. As the proposed code, you'd still require about one acre additional from current conditions in non-yard open space. Then you see usable open space. There is some existing. They have kind of that Central Park tract. But currently they'd be required 0.75 or three quarters of an acre of usable. The rest of it could be a mishmash of whatever. Versus the proposed code, you're looking at a little over an acre. So some additional usable open space.
What's the general lot size there, just for context?
Like 5,000 to 6,000. Some of them. I'll bring it over. I have the calculation tab. So you see that, these are the lots, less than 6,000. You have probably about 15 lots that are larger than 6,000, up to around 9,000 square feet on some of the kind of corners. So this is a good example from that aspect too. It does include a mix of lots that are over 6,000 and under 6,000.
Is there any place you can kick a ball?
There is a kind of a, right as you come into a subdivision, there's, there is a track there that, that you could.
There's a relatively sizable park in the middle.
Yeah, there's a, there's a neighborhood.
Neighborhood park with the play structure right there by the entrance.
More area. Right as you come into the development. So certainly increasing that additional acre would probably lead to an area where you could more throw a frisbee or a ball. You see, so you end up, I mean, so in terms of the question, Simon, I mean, in this case, you're not, the amount that's actually counted, because they have relatively few lots, and I think in these areas we're talking about, you're not going to see a whole lot of lots, 6,000 square feet or, or larger in reality with the zoning. So in this case, you're looking at like point two acres that would be, of the rear yards that'd be counted. So the difference between the current code and what can be counted as rear yards in the proposed is not a hu, a huge percentage of the overall open space. Versus if you go back to the 2000, 2005 code, I mean, it's pretty substantial of the amount that could be counted as open space taken away from what's otherwise provided.
And I presume that most of those large lots, if not all of those large lots are like along the green belt, right? So it actually does have, you know, habitat space and the like is what we're talking about for some of that.
No, in Arbor Crossing, there's not a lot of them that reach back like into the, include like SROZ. A lot of these are like on the inside of a cul-de-sac or on a corner.
I guess I thought that tree line on the west side.
There's a few of them over there on the west side, but, I mean, those lots are larger there on the very west side. But, I mean.
Thanks, that helps for context. I guess I was, now that I think about it, does back up against the other neighborhood.
So then comparing it to Renaissance at Canyon Creek, which was originally approved in 2003. Similarly, it had, you know, Arbor Crossing's had 35% open space. Renaissance was approved at 36% open space. Non-yard open space was 21%. But a lot of those are in kind of different landscape tracks and things that aren't that usable. And so the usable open space, as it's called out in the approving staff reports, 0.34 acres. Which is a relatively small percentage of the overall open space.
So, so for Canyon Creek, you were able to determine what, what was usable, but for Arbor Crossing, you.
Yeah, it didn't be just simply with the staff report for Canyon Creek, it actually called it out. It kind of identified the areas such as like the pool area and stuff that were, that were actually play structures or otherwise programmed areas, where that wasn't necessarily called out. And I couldn't, you know, determine at the time I had, you know, what portion of maybe those larger tracks were actually programmed space in Arbor Crossing.
And we, do we, are we proposing some definition of what, of what makes usable? I think we did have in Frog Pond, right, some definition of what.
Right, and we're even expanding on that, kind of focus again on that it's professionally designed with the, with, with usability in mind. So non-yard open space there, your 2.15 acres currently, which gets you about 21%. So under the current code, you'd be at 25%. So a bit more. And then your usable open space would bump up a little bit at half an acre because you're between 50 and 100 lots. So in this case, you actually, some of these spaces, your total open space, you do get half an acre. That's because there are a number of larger lots in Canyon Creek. And again, there's a mix. You end up with about half, a little over half an acre or 5% of the net area as, as rear yards. And so actually your non-yard open space is pretty similar to the 2003 approval, but really what changes is then the amount of usable open space. You're over an acre rather than down at about a third of an acre, about an acre and a quarter rather than a third of an acre in usable open space. And Aspen Meadows, so again, here we're just comparing two things. In this case, 52% of the gross area of the lot is, is actually SROZ. So in the approval, and I'll note here, you're going to get 0.21 acres rather than a quarter of an acre because they actually counted the trail that goes down into the open space as a little bit of usable open space that goes into the SROZ. So you end up with 0.2 acres of usable open space outside the SROZ. And where in the open space outside the SROZ, under the proposed code, you'd get 0.13 acres. So 5,000, 5,700 square feet rather than 9,100 square feet. So again, that's kind of key in the smaller subdivision to, because they had to waive the average lot size and be creative in counting some of the SROZ as lots in order to get to meet the lot size requirements to balance it with the requirement for the non-SROZ open, usable open space. So again, in this case, because of the, the smallness of the lots, you're only getting like 1% of the overall open space or of the overall net area, which, you know, 1% of the 25% is actually count rear yards in this case. Surely the biggest impact you see here is the reduction in the amount of open space outside the SROZ, which better helps get to the lot size required by the code.
My head is spinning.
There's a bit of math here.
This one I can't quite get to grips of. You're saying what was actually approved was 0.21 of an acre of usable open space outside of the SROZ.
Yes.
But that 0.21 is basically made, I mean, the, the numbers are almost, you can almost add the numbers together from the bottom, on the bottom table, on the last two cells to make that the last cell on the, on the top table, right? It's 0.07 and 0.13 is, is close enough. So what's the difference? Are you saying it will be a wash? Or is there, is there something different with the proposed code that would, that would have affected how Aspen Meadows was built?
So this other one includes nonusable open space. So if there was like a rainwater swell or something, it's 0.13. But I, I misspoke a bit. So because they're only going to, because of the size. So because they're only going to, because of the size of it, they're only going to be required about 2,800 square feet of usable open space outside the SROZ. So really, that goes down from usable open space outside the SROZ from about 9,100 acres, or 9,100 square feet, to 20, 2,900 square feet. So it's a substantial reduction in the amount of usable open space outside the SROZ. Which again, is intended to better balance those other site land consuming requirements, where you have trying to get the lots, but you already have half the site as SROZ plus streets.
Can you show where this is on the map? Do you have a map handy? Because I, I'm trying to picture. Is the implication then that this place has an unnecessarily large amount of open space? Because I'm, I'm not sure I can buy that.
Yeah, so.
Implication is that maybe it wasn't developable as much as they thought it was.
Yeah.
It's along the creek.
It's along the creek.
What year was it approved, Dan?
What's that?
What year was it approved?
So it was submitted in 2015, approved in 16. So let me bring it up here.
It's around here somewhere.
He's going to my favorite website, the project around the city.
Used to call it pudding, 10 pounds of development in a five-pound bag. Do we have an interactive map on the city website that allows us to keep the neighborhood and get?
He's, he's.
If it's under works.
There we go.
Here it is, okay. So to orientate, orientate you, there, here is Canyon Creek Road South, running north and south at Daybreak Street. This tract over here is the SROZ. And then you see here that they count part of the SROZ as part of the lots, in this case, to try to get enough lots that were of the required size. And then this other kind of hash area towards the street is area outside the SROZ that was counted that they preserved as open space.
Is that kind of a park, it's got a?
Yeah, it has a trail and like a park bench.
A little bench sitting there next to the road, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I haven't been down there, I guess.
So the difference under the new standards is this would, that space would be smaller, but it'd also be required to have some more purpose design that could, more quality design, and more specific requirements.
So is that, is that planned, is that as a neighborhood park? Or was it just an open, well, unused open space?
Well, it has to be usable open space, but it's some grass with a picnic table and trail and bench.
Okay.
Because the current code doesn't really say what usable is.
I guess that is some kind of use, yes. You have a picnic table, that qualifies as some kind of use, right?
What clear and objective standards apply to nearby park facilities? Outside of the immediate development?
So currently or proposed?
Well, currently and proposed.
So currently, you'd have to demonstrate, you'd have to request a waiver and demonstrate that the purpose of the open space standards are met in alternative means. Potentially saying, yeah, there's a big city, like if you're developing a lot down next to Memorial Park, let's say, like when the boat club developed, right? You may have argued, look, you know, Memorial Park's next door, we don't need to include any open space. And you may have requested a waiver for that.
And in the proposed?
Then i, in that case, I mean, look, there's, you know, 100-acre park right here. We probably, they'd probably still have some open space because of storm drainage issues and just the natural of the land, the nature of the land in that case. But otherwise, they probably wouldn't have required any dedicated open space in that subdivision, because they have the largest usable open space in the city, easily accessible.
So how is this standard expressed?
Quarter mile, right?
In, in the current code, it said, it says within a quarter mile that isn't otherwise already claimed as open space for a development.
Yes.
So quarter mile from the whole development? Or the, the proposed lots? I mean, theoretically, half the development could be more than a quarter mile, depending on what side it is.
No, that, that may be a standard that needs to be dialed in a bit more, and we can think about that.
And, and the notion of shared credit is an issue. It's very hard to, to parse that out.
Shared credit of, of a public park?
Yes.
Yeah, that's something that, as I ran this exercise, that came to my mind as well, that I think needs to be parsed out a bit more. To see how that'd work, that if there's other, for example, if there's other potentially developable residential land within a quarter mile, you know, how do you divide that equally? So, yeah, it's something to think about.
I think in practicality, you're going to find that that's not going to be an issue, but for code, you're going to have to.
Yeah.
To hash that out.
Yeah.
Wow.
So let me ask, I mean, overall, the approach of acknowledging that there was a robust discussion on these topics with Frog Pond, and that there's some merit of building upon that discussion?
As I went, as I went through, I concur with your, with the draft recommendations as they're, I mean, with the text of it. The devil is in the details, isn't it?
Often it is, yes. And I think running, I mean, for example, running the examples is always a good exercise to kind of, oh yeah, what about that? So.
Yeah, Dan, I think your examples really show the proof in the pudding that you've got two existing ones where the intent was right at the time, but when you put your metrics on it, it shows how the, that would be a better development were it done under your proposed, you know, I was lost in the weeds of the numbers and everything, but when you get down to looking at these, yeah, just looking at Aspen Meadows would be a better development under what you're proposing.
Would you switch back to the numbers, please? I'm a numbers guy.
Which ones?
Aspen Meadows.
Okay.
So we've got the three different areas on the map where this is mostly going to apply. And correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, obviously, the one where Aspen Meadows is has got significant amounts of SROZ. The stuff by Mentor Graphics, how, how does that relate to? Does that have as much SROZ? I mean, the old Filbert Orchard probably does not, right?
The old Filbert Orchard actually does on the south side, along Arrowhead Creek.
Okay.
So there, it's probably, I would say the old Filbert Orchard would end up being in a similar scenario as like an Arbor Crossing.
Okay.
Where there is a, a good, and I think as, as Commissioner Mezba mentioned, you know, that connecting and encouraging that connect, that if you're adding like a forested or non-active area, then making sense to push that down and enhance that area along the existing creek makes more sense than putting it in some disconnected area.
And I ask, because here's what I'm struggling with everybody, that maybe I'm just kind of pushing down, because maybe that's just up to the market and letting people decide where they want to live. I mean, I think I'm kind of shocked to see how much the SROZ really impacts this, right? I mean, you got no park, you know, as, as Jerry said, can you kick a ball? And there's no place to do that here. But maybe we're okay with that trade-off as you were, as, as you were bringing up, Commissioner Mezba, of, you know, you've got some habitat space there that's significant, and maybe you want to live by that, rather than a place where you can go kick a ball. So I, I guess I'm, I'm bothered by the fact that we have like a neighborhood like Aspen that does not have that, but maybe it's okay. I don't know.
Well, that's why I was bringing up.
Yeah.
The definition of useful open space, usable open space. The Aspen Meadows, those lots that are, that are facing, or the backyard is in the SROZ, those are ideal. I mean.
But those other ones?
When you do high density, you usually put high density where you have natural open space, so that it creates that kind of openness. So, yeah, you know, if I were buying there, I would not get the one right next to the park, I would get the one, one in, but facing the SROZ. But if you're looking at somebody throwing ball, well, that's not going to work anymore.
Yeah, but maybe that's okay. I guess that's what I'm struggling with, is this. I guess I keep thinking of this as park space, and maybe I need to let that go.
And I think that.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And I think that's kind of the, a bit of a bigger question in terms of where you're getting as well, is what are we attempting to do with our open space? So you've got the Renaissance development, where it's just open space to have open space, but you can't use it. And you've got Aspen Creek, where you've got open space and you can't use it because of the SROZ. And then we didn't put, so we didn't put in a design requirement to say you got to be able to kick a ball in it, but what if you, really, your demographics are not such that that's what they want? Point here is that are we wanting to create private parks in lieu of city parks by requiring open space? That then we're going to have the requirement of landscape architect that's certified? Or are we just wanting so that people aren't rubbing elbows so much? Do you see where I'm kind of getting you? It's where, where are we falling in here? Do we want?
I think there's a component of all of those.
Well, and the usability issue that I haven't heard us talk about is my house, in, when I lived in the Madison area, backed up to an SROZ, it was a big wetland back there. And my backyard was kind of like Aspen Meadows. It was truncated, because we had, the backyard was a buffer for that wetland, vegetative buffer. In fact, I couldn't cut the trees and all that stuff. I could do a lot of stuff, but I couldn't disturb the, the tree cover. But that wetland, right outside of my backyard, there was a trail that went around that wetland. And I couldn't put a fence up. So the, the usability of my backyard as part of that open space and the trail were all intact. But because we had design standards that prevented me from putting a big wall there and saying, this is, you know, my backyard line, the rest of you get lost, that wasn't the idea. The idea was that I was enjoying that view into that beautiful area, and there was a trail others would, would do too. And that trail would, would go along the wetland and end up in a big ball field, you know, quarter mile down, down from where we, we were living. So there is a way of designing these things that won't allow somebody to throw ball, but is as active for the, the purposes of open space, one of which is psychological and educational and emotional. So that was a beautiful place back there. Not for three months of the summer, you don't, you didn't want to go back there because the mosquitoes would carry you away. But the rest of the time was beautiful, you know, kind of a trail.
And the market comes into play, and the home buyer buys for the kind of opportunities that are there.
The market comes in play partially. Markets are also made. In other words, if that option is never available anywhere, it's not available.
So the key is having a variety of options in, in the broader community.
And I would also reemphasize that one of the ideas with the, the smaller open space is, is it reasonable to have a spot, a public, a shared spot where you can throw a ball that's like a quarter of acre when you only have one and a half acre, five lot subdivision? I mean, yes, if you have a large subdivision, it makes sense. But where you have a small subdivision, doesn't make sense.
Well, in small subdivisions, normally, you would want to have a more multi-neighborhood park that serves several neighborhoods. And perhaps a fee in lieu of would be a better use of that, so that you can capitalize on a public park, which is on the border of these three, four-acre neighborhoods or developments. Instead of .13 acres of active open space.
So, I mean, if there's additional comments, that's great. But again, just a reminder that, I mean, are we on the right track? Or are there specific changes you'd, you'd like to see as we bring this back around to wrap it up?
I think, I think we are on the right track. I, I, I just wanted to mention, I thank you for pulling this map up that we're, many of us are looking at. It, it comes to, I think it speaks to Commissioner Mezba's point about wildlife corridors pretty significantly. And it shows, it can, it can be used to demonstrate where those corridors are and where the gaps are as well. Obviously, the map is a little bit out of date, but I think hopefully these corridors all remain. To answer your, try to answer your question, Dan. I'm, I'm glad we had the discussion about the 10% that I precipitated. But I'm not sure that I'm willing to propose any change to that. I'm kind of happy with, with, with the way it's, it's gone. And I, I, I remember having a similar, possibly even more painful conversation way back when in the, in the Frog Pond days. And I think it was a, I think it was a compromise at that time, and I think it's probably a good compromise.
I'm already on record as having my private reservations about the clear and objective requirements. I, I certainly agree in principle that that's a wonderful thing. In practice, I see just so many problems. And it seems to me that it's inescapable that at some point, there has to be a human judgment applied, which is not all that clear and all that objective. So if, if we can get even closer to that, that would be fine. But I, in my own mind, realize that it can never be absolutely clear and absolutely objective. There's always going to be a need for some judgment on the part of the approval staff, and some judgment possibly needed on a fairly regular basis by DRB kind of board.
Thought you were going to say there was always a need for lawyers.
Well, I, I like what you've done very much.
Thanks.
Thanks. Anything else here? What's that?
Yeah. You're up, are we?
Oh, yes, we're moving forward. I'm looking for my silly script. No, these, these that are laminated are so out of date, that's what got me confused in the beginning. Here we go. That's, well, we're at the conclusion of our work session. And at the point of information, the council action minutes have been distributed. They've been very busy. Anything to take back to City Council? Any questions to ask of City Council?
No, but I have a different comment.
Yes. Yes.
When you, that last map that Dan had had up with, you know, the wetlands areas, there's the one along Wilsonville Road right in front of the high school. How and when does that, and who maintains that? Because that's getting a little bit.
Catty.
Rough at this point in time.
I believe it's owned by the school district.
Okay.
And it's, yeah, so.
It's just a little tough to see a good wildlife area like that, it's getting lots of debris and those sorts of things in there, so.
Yeah, so have gone by invasive blackberry, right?
That and just plain, you know, drive-by trash.
Oh.
Honestly.
If the high school kids aren't careful.
I don't know what you're talking about, I only have three of them, so.
This brings us then to the work program. I see that we have December completely free so far.
Sure it'll stay that way.
You may or may not get lucky.
Well, I also see that we have no scheduled public hearings on the immediate or near horizon.
No, as you'll recall, you had a marathon run of hearings at the end of last, actually across almost the entire year last year. So this is sometimes common, given that we get a two-year work program of goals from the City Council, and we start working on those goals, and we work on implementing them and on the projects, and as we implement them, we adopt them, and we have some big momentous hearings. And now we're starting new work programs and new projects. And so, as you know, as they evolve over time with you through work sessions, we'll eventually get to hearings on those as well.
So the lesson is don't do today what can be postponed to tomorrow.
That means we have September off.
So we have more Eve and more.
Okay, then. Anything else for the good of the order? Any objection to our adjournment?
Absolutely none.
Then we are adjourned at 8:33.